I have a meeting to order. I invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, we are thankful this day for the blessings you bestow on us. We start a new year forgetting what is behind and looking forward to what is ahead. We ask for growth, prosperity, and safety for all of our residents, and that a year filled with promises becomes successes for our city. Lord, lead us to make the right decisions for all so that we may grow our city in a positive direction. Let all of our considerations be guided by your hands. We ask in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
Counsel, I'm going to stop right now and ask Michael Ferris to introduce our new city clerk, and then I'm going to ask you to vote to appoint her as official city clerk.
So, thank you, Mayor. Of course, Cindy Stone has started actually as our, in a dual role. She was hired as assistant to the city manager. Today is her first day, but Cindy's also, the intention, as you all know, is to have the overlay of city clerk designation on that position as well. Cindy has most recently worked at UNC Charlotte, has a lot of relevant experience related to what we're going to be asking her to do here with the city. And as with every position, when there's a vacancy and you fill a position, you look at, you know, what was needed then versus what's needed now. So that's why there's the tweaks to the position. And just looking forward to working with Cindy, and it's been a whirlwind day. I know this is going to be probably an exciting part of the day, which is taking notes at a meeting and for organizations she started with today. But actually, I was telling her today that I started as assistant to the city manager and city clerk, and my first day, took notes as well. So it can be done, and we'll get through it together, and we're just glad to have Cindy here.
Cindy, you want to make some comments?
Good for her. I just want to thank Michael and Nikki for giving me the chance to do this, and I want to address all of you in council and Mayor Michael and the public. I am excited to do this work, and I look forward to serving the council, the mayor, as well as the residents of Alba Marl. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Counsel, I would intend, I would entertain a motion to appoint Cindy Stone as our city clerk. Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Now, moving to approval of minutes, consider approval of December 16th regular session and December 16th closed session minutes.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next is a public hearing. Ordinance 2001 is to consider a text amendment to add to chapter 95, non-residential building and vacant property maintenance standards. As council knows, we have been working on this for some time, so I'll ask Kevin to introduce before we open the public hearing, see if anyone else has comments.
Thank you, Mayor. The ordinance that you have before each night has been reformatted a little bit so that it matches our current format of our ordinances, but it's the same document that you heard back in early September, I believe, when we had the workshop meeting here, the public workshop meeting on this. This is non-residential building and vacant property maintenance standards, so this would apply to basically every non-residential building that we have, as well as those buildings that are vacant at the time. It addresses maintenance and upkeep of the structures citywide. It creates a tiered program from vacant to needing attention to structurally deficient to requiring possible demolition. So it's a comprehensive approach to building maintenance and upkeep. It does include a vacant property registry. That is something optional for the city manager to employ if it's deemed as necessary. It also includes multiple options to ensure abatement of violations can be achieved. And I won't spend too long on this. I think you're all familiar with it, but there's, this is the school of government's recommended hierarchy of distressed properties, and those going from vacant that are in generally good condition, but they don't have anybody in there, so there may be some concerns that over time this may become, may deteriorate a little bit from lack of attention. Yellow, those that just have some minor issues to them. Red, there's major structural issues and other things going on with the building. And then blue or black would be those that would be, probably need to be demolished. Again, the green would be your vacant, your relevant sections on that would be the, probably the vacant property registry, and then as well the responsibilities of the property owner and the tenant. Yellow, those are obviously vacant, some visual deficiencies but not dangerous, as I mentioned. Basic nuisance, some aesthetic criteria, but not major structural integrity issues. Red, those are your dangerous properties, those can still be repaired. Of course, these are getting into really the major concerns that we have in the city. And we have blue and black, as I mentioned, those that are probably over 50% gone and need to be demolished. So this ordinance combines multiple different ordinances that were being used across the state. As I mentioned, it's comprehensive in scope, and it's used by successful departments, not just across the state, but across the country, these methods are. And it's written to provide flexibility to staff to begin enforcement on this in a step-by-step process rather than coming back through and adding on each one of these pieces to it as we typically have to do with these ordinances. And that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing, has been duly advertised, and is one of a multi-step process council has taken in getting to this point, deciding whether to adopt this, basically a commercial maintenance code is what it is. This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Move the public hearing be closed.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Louder. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Counsel, what's your wishes on ordinance 2001?
Count makeup, statement, or do I need to make a motion first?
You can make a statement. Go ahead.
Okay. Kevin, I read that whole document, 26 pages. I was prepared with notes and such to come and pillar review over an ordinance that was, that the average businessman has to understand, and it just, it just didn't make sense to me. Until last weekend, I happened to be president of a homeowners association at Myrtle Beach. I had a meeting with the property manager. I was sitting in his office, and I saw this booklet up on the shelf that said, "Commercial Maintenance Code, City of Myrtle Beach." Forty-some pages. So thank you for keeping it to 26 pages.
Move approval of ordinance 20-01.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve ordinance 2001. Second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Counsel, I have a couple of agenda adjustments. Somehow or another, we got a couple of things that didn't appear on the agenda. Announced delegation is Amy Phelps would come next, and then at the end, we need to add a closed session for personnel.
Move approval to the adjustment of the agenda.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next is an announced delegation, Ms. Amy Phelps, Heritage Classical Academy.
So I am Amy Phelps, and my husband Jason's here as well, and we just want to thank you so much, Mayor Michael, and council members for allowing us to be here tonight. Some of you were able to attend our vision luncheon, but some of you were not, and so we just thought we'd come right to you and share with you about the exciting and affordable education option that's coming to Stanley County. And it's called Heritage Classical Academy, and we will recover the past and restore the future. So after over a decade of dreaming of starting a classical Christian school, and through prayerful consideration, my husband Jason and I are going to just go for it and start a school. We have refined our dream a little bit, and so I'll share about that tonight in our core values. But we will start with kindergarten in August 2020, and will add a grade each year with plans to go through the 12th grade. And so our first graduate wedding class will be the class of 2033. Our mission is to provide an excellent Christ-centered classical education to the students of Stanley County. I'd like to start with opportunity in education in Stanley County. According to the Annie E. Casey Foundation, children who read proficiently by the end of third grade are more likely to graduate from high school and to be economically successful in adulthood. A subsequent study went on to say that students who cannot read proficiently are especially unlikely to obtain a post-secondary degree. So this is a chart that shows the third grade proficiency for 2018 in Stanley County. District-wide is 53%. When you drill down to county-wide economically disadvantaged, reading proficiency is 43%, and in Alba Marl City, elementary schools economically disadvantaged is 21%. If you drill down into even more subcategories, you can get down to such things as at one school, the third grade reading proficiency for boys is 11.1%. Here in the latest numbers, also from NorthCarolinaPublicSchools.org, you will see the 2017 district percentage for high school graduates enrolling in college in Stanley County is 56%. This includes the 16 UNC campuses and the 58 North Carolina community colleges. For economically disadvantaged students in Stanley County, the college enrollment is 15%. Now, we don't think everybody should go to college. We think that, like members of my family, people can be very successful who choose not to go to college. We do believe it needs to be a choice. They need to be able to choose their path, and it not just be a result of students perhaps being unprepared. The problem with public education is not funding. The first graph by the Cato Institute shows no positive correlation between federal spending and national math reading and science scores. While spending skyrocketed, test scores remained flat. A recent study by the Michigan State University, which analyzed long-term education spending trends, concluded that higher school spending did not appear to translate to more student learning. Specifically on fourth and eighth grade, national assessment of educational progress scores, often called the nation's report card, there was no clear correlation between spending increases and test improvements from 2003 to 2015. If we draw the same comparison between funding and proficiency even closer to home, we find the same. More money does not mean greater proficiency. The graph shows third grade reading proficiency and spending per student in Stanley County since 2009. My husband Jason grouped the results by the two different test versions, and he removed 2013 because that was the first year of the new test, and the scores were unusually low. So we'll be generous and say that the trend line is flat, but there is clearly not a positive correlation between spending and proficiency. Like many private schools across our state, tuition cost per student at Heritage Classical Academy is significantly less than the cost per student by the public education system. It's not the funding, and it's not the facilities. According to a press release from Stanley County Schools, and also an article in the Stanley News &amp; Press, public school facilities are well-equipped with technology as part of the Stanley County Schools' Vision 2020 Plan. We'd also like to add, it's not the faculty. We know that there are wonderful, committed, skilled professionals that field Stanley County schools, from support staff to teachers to administrators, in all roles and in all departments. We know the faculty is being asked to do more than ever before, and are doing their best to educate and care for the students of Stanley County. So it's not the funding, it's not the facilities, and it's not the faculty. It is the foundation. The system is flawed. Today's public schools are man-centered. There is no such thing as a secular or values-neutral education. All teaching presupposes a belief system at its foundation. The only question is, what are the beliefs? The belief system of the public school is by design and by policy man-centered. Today's public schools are progressive. The progressive movement of the late 19th and early 20th century, led by educators like John Dewey, believed that God did not exist, that schools were useful for social engineering, and in response to industrialism, focused education on pragmatic training. So they got away from the well-rounded liberal arts education, the formation of a virtuous person, or the equipping and love of learning. And the goal of public education now is college and career readiness, not as a byproduct of an excellent education, but the reason for education. Like many classical Christian schools across the nation, Heritage Classical Academy will be different. Heritage Classical Academy will be Christ-centered. We will cultivate wisdom and virtue by nourishing the soul on truth, goodness, and beauty, so that in Christ, the student is better able to know, glorify, and enjoy God. We will tell the students the truth, that they are made in the image of God. So just imagine how differently children and young adults would behave if they believed this. How differently would they treat each other if they heard this daily? A biblical worldview would be integrated into all subjects. It's not just about chapel or memorizing a few Bible verses. The teaching is not compartmentalized, but it's integrated into all of the subjects. We'll also follow a classical model. There is not a classical school currently in Stanley County. And we will leverage the form of education that was started by the Greeks and the Romans, developed through history, and intended to cultivate wisdom and virtue. So this was how people were educated before the progressive movement in the early 20th century. This is how our founders were educated. And it basically goes to teaching to the grain of the child. It's divided up into three major parts of development. You have the grammar stage, the logic stage, and the rhetoric stage. So K6, you know how kids are, if you have grandkids or have had kids before, they just are sponges. They can soak up everything, and so you take use of that, and you teach them through chants and songs and memorization. They learn reading through phonics, and they learn basically the facts and fundamentals. Then as they grow into middle school, you know how middle schoolers get, they get a little bit argumentative. Well, instead of fighting against that, you embrace it, and you teach them formal logic. And so they learn how to argue well. So the facts and fundamentals that they learned as grammar students, they then take and start to form great arguments with. And then in the rhetoric stage of 10th through 12th grade, they take the facts and fundamentals, how to argue, and they fine-tune it with great communication. They study speeches and writers, they study primary sources, and then they practice that themselves, and they become great and effective communicators. At our school, we will teach Latin. There's lots of reasons for doing that, but I'll save time. Tonight, we will read great books. No Captain Underpants going on at our school. We will read great books. We also have primary sources. You read what the source was, not what someone says about the source, and then they're able to draw their own conclusions. History, literature, music, and art are chronological and integrated, so whatever you're learning in history, you're then reading a literature book from that same time period, you're learning music and art from that same time period. It's all very integrated. And there will be little or no technology. Nationally, the question is being raised, is technology in the classroom a good thing? And if, there are lots of articles about how schools in Silicon Valley, where the technology's coming from, have schools with no technology. And so the people at all of these, you know, big computer places are sending their children to schools where there's not technology. So we will not utilize personal devices, and we will encourage parents to cut down on it at home. And we're going to have books. There's less standardized testing with classical model. There was, the state did a survey for 42,000 parents who responded in 2018, and they said that 78% of them, parents, had children take too many tests. State officials also said that 76% of teachers have said that students are being tested too much. So because we don't have state regulations other than one standardized test a year, that's all we'll be doing at Heritage Classical Academy. They will have quizzes and tests, but they'll have one standardized test. Classical education is holistic. It's about the body, soul, and mind. It's not about forming workers, but cultivating people and lifelong learners. The purpose of classical education is to cultivate virtue and wisdom. The classical Christian does not ask, what can I do with this learning, but what will this learning do to me? We'll also have high expectations. We will set high expectations for all students, parents, and faculty in order to reach our full God-given potential and bring Him glory. We will steward the gifts of the children. They will steward the gifts they've been given. There will be manners, there will be respect and civility, uniforms, high academic standards. Not that everyone needs to make an A, but everyone needs to do their best. And we will have high expectations for discipline and classroom management, which will serve not only to provide a safe and effective environment of learning, but will also be a tool to shepherd our students' hearts. And we'll be able to do this because of our fourth core value, which is parental partnership. We will covenant with parents and guardians to help them fulfill their God-given responsibility to raise their children in the fear and instruction of the Lord. Studies show the greatest indicator of student success is parental involvement, and we believe parents have the primary role in educating and discipling their children. It is not the role of the school to fix the child, and it is not the role of the school to raise the child. So we will work with the parents and seek to restore the dignity of the parent as the caregiver and the provider. We will have required parental events. We will have opportunity for fellowship and community, like book clubs and Bible study. It's all about relationship, building a relationship with the parents and building a relationship with the families. Our last thing that also sets us apart from other schools is that we will promote affordable access. We will love our neighbor by doing our best to make Heritage Classical Academy affordable to all families regardless of their socioeconomic background. Through the generosity of sponsors, the North Carolina Opportunity Scholarship, and the stewardship of resources, we will offer a sliding tuition scale based on income and the number of students attending. All parents will pay something. That makes them invested, and it reinforces the dignity of them as parents, as the provider for their children. We envision Heritage Classical Academy as a thriving K-12 school that will cultivate kingdom citizens. It will serve to rebuild, restore, renew their families, their communities, and the generations now and to come. We are modeling Heritage Classical Academy after many successful classical Christian schools, but mainly the affordable access part, we're modeling after schools, Brookstone Schools in Charlotte, and Hope Academy in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Brookstone Schools, with over 15 years of experience, exist to glorify God by equipping urban students academically, socially, and spiritually for future lives of leadership and service. In 2018, their third graders achieved an 88% reading proficiency. Hope Academy, with almost 20 years of experience of fostering hope in God in the inner city by providing youth with a remarkable Christ-centered education, outpaces their public school counterparts by over 40% in reading and math proficiency. While we acknowledge assessments are different depending on the systems, the results of Brookstone and Hope Academy prove that schools with majority populations of economically disadvantaged students cannot just be proficient, but excel, not just academically, but socially and spiritually. I love Alba Marl. I love Stanley County. I wasn't one of those students who said, oh my goodness, get me out of here. I stayed here. I commuted to UNC Charlotte, and I raised my family here, and I love this place, and I want to see this place improved. That is our heart, to see our community change. And we believe, like Brookstone and Hope Academy, by God's grace and power, Heritage Classical Academy can be a solution to the problems, a solution, one of solutions, to the problems facing Stanley County. Think about it. If students were raised knowing they're made in the image of God and loved dearly, could that change the opioid addiction that we have in our county? We believe that we can offer an educational alternative to drive business and industry for economic development. I have a sister in real estate, and she knows that people do hesitate sometimes to move here because of the public education system. We believe it is time for students in Stanley County to flourish despite their socioeconomic background and to have a choice in education. We will be renting space for our school from The Gathering. Through their hospitality, the Lord has provided an excellent safe space with great parking and traffic flow right in the heart of downtown Alba Marl, so that we can be centrally located, making transportation more accessible for families, and to be a part of the revitalization of downtown Alba Marl, which is so exciting to see. We have our first open house and kindergarten enrollment on Monday, January 27th, from 6:30 to 7:30 at The Gathering. And we're so excited to have a leader in classical education coming to basically share what a classical Christian classroom is like. We also have time for question and answer and refreshments. And we started rolling for kindergarten on January 13th, so parents can be well aware of how to apply for the North Carolina Opportunity Scholarship, which opens on February 1st. So to close, we ask you as leaders of our community to see us as a good thing. And not just to see us as a good thing, but to advocate for us and for educational choice and for the students and families of our community. We need you to encourage your church, fellow community leaders, business leaders, to support Heritage Classical Academy. To see effective, lasting, beneficial change in education and our economy and our culture and community is going to take courage and humility and wisdom and hope and faith. It's going to mean no more excuses, no more blame, no more doing the same old thing, but thinking outside of the box of the expected, going back to what is good and true and beautiful. Thank you. Do you have any questions I can answer?
When would your classes actually start?
Our classes will start in August, so we'll follow pretty closely the Stanley County Schools' calendar for, so families can kind of match their days that are out.
Now, I met with you, and I remember you telling me this, but I have forgotten. Your first group of kindergarteners.
Yes.
That class, about how many are you hoping to get?
Our goal is to have two classes of 15.
I couldn't remember that right. And then every year have 30?
That would be great, yes. Every year to be able to add the same. Yes, that's our goal.
Counsel, have further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate it.
Very nicely done. Very nice. You must have gotten somewhere.
Next, we'll move to unannounced delegations, and if I have Joey Gathens. Joey will come forward. Joey, if you will, restate your name and address for me for the record, please.
Joey Gathens, 421 Second Avenue, Alba Marl. Councilman, Mr. Mayor, and the audience, I just come today just with a concern. I saw the, from, I believe it's Mr. Robinson, with the improvement here for the commercial. We got a problem on Second Avenue I've dealt with for quite some time. We have two homes there that have been vacated for a while. Still had power, still had sewer, had a burst pipe on one, a sewer pipe. They trenched it to run out to the neighbor's yard. It took me forever to work on this. Been going on 10 months, sometimes some of it up to two years. It's 311 Second Avenue and 408 Second Avenue. Has said they haven't had no, well, they don't, up till Thursday, and I commend Chief Doolin. I reached out to him on Thursday that there was someone living in that home and living in an outbuilding behind, which the outbuilding, I believe, had been padlocked, but they had cut a hole in the side to make a home. It was supposed to have been no water, no sewer, and I reached out to Kevin or some of his, some of his people, and I'm sure he's got all the record on it, and Chief Doolin has. There was so much tape to go. There was so much tape to go through to try to get this stopped. And I'm sure if anybody had that in their neighborhood, they'd be just like me right here with you. I would just like to see the council, please, reinforce some kind, some enforcement on the landowners or the homeowners, that if you had a home, you keep it up, just like they were talking about the non, the, I'm sorry, the, what he had before on the commercial buildings. Let's do that on the same. We want Alamoore to be pretty. I've lived in that neighborhood for 67 years, almost, a couple more months. But I don't understand. And come to find out, let me go back just a minute. 311 Second Avenue? I don't know what we got a check-up policy on when they cut the water and power off. But they had stole a water meter and put their water meter on, another stolen water meter on. I'm sure Kevin has the, I think they checked it out Thursday. They had bypassed the power, the meter, at this 311. Numerous times, thousands of dollars of equipment has sat down there blocking the road for call after call, EMT, ambulance, police. And I'm sure Chief Doolin has record of all that. I would like to see that handled somehow with a restrictor code or something to help us keep these neighborhoods clean. We know what Stanley County is altogether with the drug crisis. If we know it's happening, let's stop it. Let's don't let it continue, or let's don't harbor places for them to continue. We know, you can ride around our town and see them living in outbuildings, in old buildings, residential and commercial buildings. Let's stop this. Have people that want to move to Alamoore not to come into somewhere where you look and there's everybody laying everywhere and trash all over the city. Second Avenue on the end, we're close to, that I was talking to, you have to clean it up yourself. That's not my responsibility of being in that neighborhood for 67 years. That's a homeowner's responsibility to take care of your place and to make it presentable. That's why I'm just reaching out to the council.
Joey, you gave us two addresses. Go back and give me those addresses one more.
311 Second Avenue and 408 Second Avenue.
I just have one question of you. So when you first realized that something was going on at these places, you made a phone call then?
I did. I have worked on this for a couple of years.
And who did you call the very first time?
I believe I had reached out to this, I had reached out to Ms. Redwine for a while at one time, and she said it wasn't in her realm, which she tried. She'd done her job. They gave me a number for Mooresville or somewhere, for waste management or something, something about the code. And I'm sure Kevin can tell you more about this than I know. But, and I'm not real sure, so I didn't keep real close records, which I should.
First issue was no water and no electricity and nobody living there. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am. They, the mother and daddy died, this is at 408 Second Avenue, passed away will be two years this coming February. They cut the power off in May, April or May of that same two years. This will be two, coming up on two years. They've had no power, no water. But yet they haul water in with a wagon and five-gallon things.
Is it being rented, or what's going on?
No. It's the son of the parents, and he's staying there. The house at 311, I know I'm probably confusing, but 311? And I'm sure Chief Doolin, he can explain to you a whole lot better what happened with that. That was the mess. It was supposed to have been condemned or going in the process. They moved out and moved to Raleigh. He finally touched base with them, got up with them. The girl that come out and asked them what they were doing there, wasn't even supposed to be there. She was renting rooms out and the building out to other people. And it's just, it was just a total mess. Every time you turn around, the fire department's down there. I looked, I went out the other night, and I thought, "Oh, my God, it's got foggy." No, it wasn't fog. It was smoke. I could see it from my house billowing up. I thought, "My God, somebody's house is on fire down there." So I get in the car and ride down there. The fire department pulls up the time I do. They're burning trash, a big monster pile of trash that you see like a landfill. They've got mattresses laid out in the front of the house on the porch. They've got furniture sitting out beside the road. Now, if they pick it up tomorrow, is our pickup. We'll see if they do that. But if I would, if I could, and I won't waste any more of your time. I just let you know that I would like to have some help trying to clean up this part of the neighborhood. I like to keep all neighborhoods clean.
Kevin, do these meet James's requirements?
How, so?
Are they, do they meet the requirements that we have James Lester work on?
Oh, yeah. James got a case file on this one.
On both of them?
311 Second Avenue. I'm not familiar with 408.
I had introduced that to him, to people before, not to you, Kevin.
I haven't, I haven't seen that. We probably have something in the past. I haven't seen any recent records for that. We'll have to look into that. But 311 is a mess. I mean, it's got everything going on there, just as Mr. Gathen said there. It's got...
Where is it at in James's process?
He's, he has had the, he has an order on it basically right now for everything needs to be done. The problem with it is, is that, as Joey said, the owner passed away. And the sons, or son, there's two of them. One can't be found. The other ones were near impossible to get in touch with. We finally have been able to get in touch with them. And they have told both Chief Doolin and I that they don't want anybody in the house. To my knowledge, in the past week or so, there hasn't been anybody in there.
Not since, there were Friday.
Friday, okay. I went by this morning and it looked pretty vacant, but there's still a mess out there. We spent probably, I don't know, $1,000 so far cleaning up the property out there a couple of times, not touching the sewer issue or anything like that. But when the, when the water was turned off, we went ahead and we talked with utilities and had them leave it off because of the health hazard there. But we've contacted the building inspector, the county building inspector, county health department. We even had, we had Deener come down and look at the storm sewer and everything around there to see what was leaching off onto adjacent properties. They didn't find much, but they've been trying to help out as well. So there's, I think DSS took children out of there earlier, so it's just a mess.
Is it going to meet the requirements to condemn and tear down, the 50% rule?
It's, I don't, I don't, I don't know that it meets that yet. I haven't, James and I have not gotten that far with it yet. Our biggest issue is we couldn't get in touch with anybody. It's my understanding that it is, there is a note on the house, and it's going to be bank-owned eventually. That's, that's what we've heard. It's going to be, the bank is going to be repossessing it eventually. That's, that's what we had heard. So we're actually hopeful we'll be able to work with the bank on that a little bit. We've had some success with that in the past, so.
Has somebody followed up on the stolen meter?
Yes. Yeah, Brian Hinson went out there on, it was last week, I think it was last Thursday, Friday, went out there and found it, and they removed it. I think there is a small fine they can put on them for that. But I think the way they've got it set up now is going to be hard to, for them to reconnect that.
Is there currently power at the house?
We, yeah, that's right. There's not power right now. We only ask that they keep the water turned off. We can really only do the bare minimum in terms of life safety when it comes to that. And the electrical was not a concern of ours at the time. It's mainly the water because of the sewer issue. But they were turned off for lack of payment. And I think they just, rather than even bother with it, they didn't turn either one of them back on.
Kevin, I'm sorry, what was the, did you say 311?
Second Avenue.
Second Avenue. Over off of Sunset.
I'm sorry?
Two houses up from Sunset.
Okay. I was just trying to find it on GIS, and I'm not finding 311.
Now, if you drove by there, you'll, you'll notice it pretty quick.
Is the office, the Carmenter residence?
Yeah. So we do have multiple violations, zoning nuisance, and minimum housing all open on it right now.
Thanks.
Thank you. Joey, thank you very much.
Yeah. And the power has been cut off, Kevin.
Okay.
I saw they had a drop cord run from the house out to the outbuilding. And I did see the city cutting the power off Friday. So I know they cut it off. Council, I appreciate your time. And if you can help me, I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Joey. Next unannounced delegation is Peter Ashudo. Talk about city-county relationship. If you will, you name in your address, please, for the record.
Peter Ashudo, 1106 Belcor, Alamoore. Thank you all for having me. What I'm doing is going around all the municipalities. As you may or may not know, I'm a candidate for county commissioner for Stanley County. And here's some of the reasons that I'm running. A lot of it is, is we need to have cooperation with the cities. And here's what not to do. The cities are not subordinate to the counties. However, in February, March of 2017, the counties did two things. First of all, they tried to take $679,228.55 from your coffers by reallocating the sales tax dollars. And I know they had to talk to saying they had to look at that. Anybody could have looked at this piece of paper and saw that every municipality, with the exception of probably Norwood, because they didn't have, it wasn't much dollar saving, they would have been just devastated if they had done that. Now, they're legally okay to do so under the Charter of North Carolina. But that never should have happened. You could have looked at that in 15 seconds and say, "Hey, that would be devastating." And then my fear was, if you look at, if you remember at that meeting, Commissioner Morgan's had made a comment that perhaps in the future, they'll just take part of the growth money rather than, you know, leaving y'all what you have. So that's, that's one of the reasons I'm, I feel you have to work together. Another thing, which I think was much worse, was when Representative Burr at the time passed ordinance and, through the legislature, but the Senate didn't pass it, where it was supporting, and the county commissioners voted to support it, the resolution supported proposed legislation requiring Stanley County municipalities to obtain the consent of the Board of Commissioners prior to entering, renewing, or amending a contract or memorandum of understanding with a unit of local government located outside of Stanley County. Now, the way it's set up, you have counties are over here and cities are over here. The cities are not underneath the counties. And I thought that was just ridiculous because, you know, Locust is located in two different counties. And you guys do a lot of business, like with Concord, with the water and stuff like that. And it just seemed like it was bigger government. And that would, I would never support anything like that. And here's what you should do. You should work with the municipalities. One of the last, one of my last votes, and what I'm most proud of, when I was a county commissioner, was working with you guys to do the land transfer to move the museum over to the City Hall Annex, so you can build that nice, so Pfeiffer could come down here and could come downtown. That was pretty, that was a pretty huge, one of the biggest things that'll have an impact in Alamoore in quite a while. Another thing I'd like to do is working with municipalities is, you know, first of all, let me talk about the Ag Center. I remember when I first brought Gregory out there to the Science Fair project when he was in like the third grade. That lobby was like on this ridiculous angle, and it was crazy how they had to put things in angles. And one of the last things I also did as county commissioner was got approval to expand the lobby at the Ag Civic Center. And now it's more useful. They're starting to have weddings out there, and it was only $125,000. And now that is more useful for the, for the public. And the next thing I'd like to do out there is when you walk out front, they have that big patio area there. I would like to put some sort of a cover over it, over all that concrete out there to make that facility more useful. Now, I talked to Amanda, and she said now that they, this is the first year they started booking the Ag Center for weddings. So if you put a overhang out there, you can make that a lot more useful with, you'd have dinners inside and social stuff outside. And that'd be for the betterment of the county. Also, I've been a big thing with the arena project. You know, I support it, I've supported the arena project since the get-go that they're going to do at the Ag Center. And then another issue was, two more issues with that about the cities and the counties. I was driving from Salisbury about a week or so ago, and there's a lady walking from Meisenheimer to Ridgefield in a ditch. Now, that sidewalk for economic development should be extended from Pfeiffer to Ridgefield. Because if you notice, the sidewalk stops right there at the Meisenheimer city limit. And it's a half, it's only a half a mile of sidewalk. And that'll make it safer for the students and the residents of Meisenheimer to get down to that shopping area, which has really grown a lot in the north part of the county. Another one is parks and recreation sponsorships. You know, I'm a big advocate of, and realizing that it's the municipalities that bear the burden of parks and recreation for the entire county residents. Because this county currently spends hardly any money on parks and recreation program. So what I'd like to do, and I tried, I talked about this last time, was setting aside a certain amount of money a year and having some sort of a grant program and partnerships, not to help with your budgets, but to help with capital improvements. Like I know a few years ago, Locust, their bathroom facilities at their parks were, had needed, needed help building and repairs. And they were hosting a lot of tournaments, a lot of softball tournaments, and they were losing, you know, possibly losing some tournaments. So that's something where you can invest in to help, you know, to help out with the capital improvements. And I know in the past, when I was a county commissioner, the other commissioners would sometimes say, "Well, you do it for this one, you could have to do it for that one." You don't necessarily have to. And just the way logistic things are, everyone's not going to want everything at the same time. That's just the way it's probably going to work. And that's what I'd like to work with that. And finally, I'd like to do, and talk about ethics. And the SIBS Act, they're talking about ethics. There's a code of ethics where you're, when you're on the county commissioner. And I would like to bring that, bring that back. And I'm not trying to bring, throw anyone under the bus on this, but this is just a fact of life and one of the reasons I was playing with running when I threw myself, threw my, made the final decision and throw my head into the thing. They have a code of conduct for county commissioners. It says, "Number three, the professional and personal conduct of members must be above reproach and avoid even the appearance of impropriety." We have a county commissioner who has 12 run-ins with the law over the past 10 years or so. Now, it's one thing if he had them before, but he's had one incident that's currently under, you know, it's still in the court, about driving while intoxicated with a boat. And there was another incident out there where, when there was a group with the county commissioner was, had an incident with drinking and a boat and damaging property down in Baden. And when the officers came, that group did not cooperate with the police. So nobody got arrested for that. So if you talk about being supportive of law enforcement, man, you gotta man up when you do something wrong and at least cooperate. And Commissioner Morgan did not do that. And then also, the Esther House comes before y'all's board, board once a year probably, like they do ours, to get resolutions to be against domestic violence. And two of his, two of his violations were domestic abuse charges, one in Florida and one in Chatham County. So, you know, when you say, "What does that matter?" And the top of it all was number 18, compliance and enforcement. The Board of County Commissioners may impose sanctions on members whose conduct does not comply with the county's code of ethics, such as reprimand, formal censure, loss of committee assignments, or other actions consistent with the North Carolina general statutes and local laws. Now, the county commissioners had a power to do something, to censor, do whatever. But what did they do? Commissioner Morton, Swain, Almond, and Barbie voted to put him as vice chair of the county commissioners. You know, ethics, ethics are ethics. And I'm not perfect. But you know, when you're dealing with law enforcement and stuff like that, you just want to have people who can make sound decisions on the board. And that's another reason why I'm running. And I thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Deeter.
Moving to municipal calendar. Is any of your agenda, does anyone have any comments or questions?
Yeah, there was something on there, but I did not make a note on it. I will hang tight, just hold on one second. It was something very... Yeah, no. The outdoor bonanza is March 28th. It's not April 28th. I knew I saw it and would be able to find it.
It's under Mark. It's actually under twice.
It's actually under both of them, fellow members of the board.
Oh, I saw Mark first.
That's right. So it's on both of it. It's only, we only have one, thank goodness. Yeah.
Moving into unfinished business, consider appointments to the city boards of commissions. Council, we have multiple boards to consider, just starting at the list going down that's on our agenda. I'm going to start with Historic Resources Commission. We have two seats to fill. Kristy Stoner and John Williams are not eligible for reappointment and need to be replaced.
Mayor, I'd like to place into the name nomination of Benton Dry for one of those seats, and Anthony Tony Purnell. I know him as Tony, but I guess his name is Anthony.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll move to Planning and Zoning Board. Seat one is vacant. Typically, in the past, council has usually moved up an alternate. Your first alternate is Michelle Cummings, and she would be interested in serving in seat one if council so desires.
Let's do that one by sale.
Okay.
So moved, your honor.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
May I continue?
Sure.
Move Chuck Horn from second alternate up to first alternate. Let's do these one at a time, if that's okay.
Fine with me.
Place in a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
For second alternate, if I might continue, place a nomination Keith Wolf.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to appoint Keith Wolf as second alternate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Unless anybody else has a nomination for the third, since it's our third time being in front of us, I would continue on. Does anybody else have one that?
Anyone have anybody they wish to appoint?
As I'm getting ready to do this, I will say though, to the folks watching, to anybody here, anybody watching, anybody listening or reading, we can only appoint from that which has presented themselves as potential members of boards or commissions. And to that, Joey Gathens, I thank you, for whatever reason, brought you here, but I would say that we put him as that third alternate.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, we have three there to consider. And looking at attendance is what council wished to do the last time we discussed this. Peter Ashudo is up for reappointment, if council so desires, and he does, has nearly perfect attendance.
Perfect attendance. A move, continue. Yes.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Council, we have two more positions, but unless the council knows of someone, we have no applications.
And those, if we might, those are the East Almaral representative. And thank you for bringing, I mean, attendance is very important. Don't put somebody on it if they can't go for whatever reason. I still think that we, and I don't know who we is, if it's you, Mayor, or if it's Lisa, or if it, who it is, it might be Lisa, that contacts East Almaral and says, give us a name of someone that you know wants to do this and can be there, and when the meetings are.
And the other is an at-large seat, so we need someone to fill the other seat.
But we look at that at-large seat, your honor. It says on one thing that it's open, but on another, where it says the term expiration date, it says it's still there till July 1st of 2020. Nikki, I appreciate you getting this to me, because it was, I needed it in paper form, okay?
Lisa, do you see what she's talking about? One area says it expires in 19, and then on attendance, it said it expires in 20. Which did actually expire?
Go by the appointment roster.
Okay, then it expired in 19.
So that other one, expiration, that's a.
And I would encourage anyone watching this, or anyone in the audience that would wishes to be involved in any of these boards, please, our application process is on our website. Please fill out application, get it to us, and show us your interest in being appointed to some of the boards. Council, unless you have someone else, we'll move on to the next item.
Before we go any further, that application is online, but it's not, it needs to be updated. We don't need to ask, tell anybody.
You need to be able to edit that form.
And that form needs to be changed.
Save it and email it to.
Yeah, that form needs to be changed as to what committees we have opened.
You want a fillable form is what you want.
Yes.
Edible.
And it also needs a place on there to sign and date, because we don't know when some of these folks have submitted these applications that we have. So if that can be updated with the committees that we have, plus a signature and date on there, that would be great.
If you go do a signature and date, you're going to have to mail it in, unless you're going to accept electronic.
You could do it electronic.
Basically typing it in, I will be able to do it.
Or a place. I want a date on there, is the big thing. I want a date.
Okay. Anyone else have anything further? Okay, moving on to number seven, update on the public housing door project.
Santa Claus. No, it's Tony.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. In your packet, you have a letter from Stockner Architecture that he's seeing. I'm just going to update it. It's pretty close to accurate. We actually met with Wayne on last Thursday to finalize everything for the project. As of this time, the plans are 100% done. Everything is already out to bid. The paper's already ran it. The other places that has already ran it. We already have seven, have seven contractors that show an interest in it. Out of that seven, a couple of them have some issues with their license, but, you know, this is just the beginning of it. So we have seven contractors that are interested in it at this time. We've already got a bid date set, our pre-bid conference is January 22nd. It'll be held at our office, and at that time, the interested contractors that show up will be showing the units, sort of showing the work. And it's always good to see what you're going to do before you do it. The bids are going to be taken, I think, the 6th of February at 3:00. And then we've already tried to schedule it for the 17th, or the second council meeting in February, to bring it for consideration to appoint a contractor at that time. So we're on track of getting it going. We're a little bit behind, but we were behind, we were setback a couple months. Yes, sir.
Not asking you for the name, but do we have any of the contractors that are bidding that are local?
Yes, we have one contract, one contract that is local, that is interested in it. Now, any of the rest of them, I will probably reach out to some of them. But a lot of the plan rooms that these goes to, you're, actually, two of them, one's in Oakboro and one's in Almaral.
Okay.
Actually, these plan rooms, a lot of your, they'll trouble them, you know, they're looking for them, looking for work that's close to home. So if they're in these plan rooms, they'll see that it is coming up. But we have in the past reached out to some of our local guys to see if they're interested in it, you know, for these projects. So yes, we have always tried to get local participation as much as possible.
Yeah, thank you.
What percentage of the doors do you anticipate us being able to salvage?
We're not going to salvage any. We actually, through our capital funds, through seeing that we had a little bit more money than we anticipated, we actually, in our meeting that we had with them, with Wayne last Thursday, what we did was went ahead and added in, our original one was to take the Elizabeth Heights neighborhood and refurbish it, trying to keep our costs down to under a certain number of what the money that we thought we had. But finding out that we've got a little bit more money, so we have now added every door back in, both sites, but we're going to do an alternate deduct for in the event that happens. If it comes out, we've got too much money, or we don't have enough money to cover the bid, then we will actually, we've got it in there where we can actually go back and try to save some money by doing some refurbishing on some areas that doesn't necessarily mean they're not in bad shape. If they're, if they're going to refurbish, they would still be in really good shape.
And that's all interior doors and.
All interior doors and exterior doors. We are doing all, we have a total of 800 exterior doors. We'll be doing those as well, new locks. We'll be putting on new locks. Our lock system was put in in 2002. It's, they're starting to wear, starting to cost a lot. So we're actually going, this is, if you're going to do it now, it's time to do it. So we're going to be changing all the hardware as well.
Council, have you further questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Moving to number eight, discussion Almaral Business Center. At your desk tonight, you have some paperwork on the latest estimates from Chambers Engineering about the project. You have three options. And my understanding from our last meeting, council wished to proceed. We give you this to let you decide which way you're interested, but regardless of what you do, if you're going to move forward, I can suggest that you do it with alternatives, so you have options when those bids come back. There are several ways you can do it. You can bid it with different ways, and then have several alternatives, that you can have some options if you need them. Don't just put it out there with one thing and say that's it. Let's give the council the right to choose what they want to do when it comes back, if council decides to move forward.
When you see our making a decision, yea, nay?
I really can't tell you how long it will take them to have everything ready to go to bid. But we're not going to know until we actually go to bid and get it back, what the final number is going to be. These are his estimates to the best he could do, and if you actually look, they're a little better than what he originally estimated. But whether, do we get a bid back, I can't begin to tell you what it would be. And I would envision, I would, at least a couple months down the road, by the time he gets this out and gets it back, it's not going to be real quick.
Chris is not here.
Right.
We, this is, granted, we got these through email, but we've gotten a paper copy tonight. I think to be completely, to cover all of our bases, we've got these in hand, he needs to see them. And when I sat here a while ago and looked at them, after I got through, pulling my heart back up on the podium, all I could think about was the night we had one of our meetings, and the folks from Cobb were here, and gave to us the idea that the Almaral Business Center, they did not say the only way it would work, but this is what I heard. The only way it's going to work, the only way we're going to be able to do this with that many pieces of property, pieces of property and that much acreage, is to make it a mixed-use piece of property. So I think, and I just want everybody to either be thinking about yea or not, and if we are thinking that that's the route we need to go, then that's what we need to be marketing it as, and we need to find where there is such a piece of property, whether it's this large or not, that has got that kind of mixed-use in it. I think I heard Mike Manus from Central Lana say, there are such facilities out there, such pieces of property out there. I'm telling you, it hurts my heart to think about this amount of property, this amount of money, thinking that we're going to bring in whiskey cassettes and CNAs and anything, and we're not, we're not. And we've had it out there, and we still hadn't had any good knocks on it. So guys, we either got to pick up and look and see what's going to work, or we're just always going to have that piece of property on 52 South. And I cannot, I can't swallow that anymore. It's been down there long enough. So I'm not preaching, I'm just saying, if we're going to do anything, we got to do some of this, because even if we bring in a mixed group, mixed units down there, we got to have a road, we got to have water, we got to have sewer. The infrastructure's got to be there.
Regardless of what you do, if you don't have infrastructure, you're not going to do anything.
That's what I'm saying.
That's your first step.
And every time I get one of these from Electric Cities, and we're not in it, about, again, if we're going to be competitive, then we got to get off our duffs. And yeah, you can quote me on that one. That can go in the paper, I don't care. No, we've got to, guys, because.
Regardless of what you do down there, whether it's a mixed-use or anything, without the road, and then without us putting utilities in, you've got a vacant piece of property that's never going to go anywhere.
That's the reason I made those comments.
When we go to Monroe, is one of the sites that we're going to look at, is that a mixed-use or?
No, it will not be.
But you have to realize, that was 25 years ago, that that thing was started at the airport, and it's at the airport, literally.
Mixed-use, in my opinion, is not maybe the same definition that Mr. Manus was talking about. To me, mixed-use is business and industrial. It's not residential. We got residential on the edge, and we just went through two years ago, where a residential wanted to come in front of a existing business, and we turned them down. We should have residential, but I think it should be on the ends like it is now, not in the middle of an industry park. I think you will have problems with industry wanting to locate there if they got to go beside of a big complex.
I want us to be open-minded. I still don't believe sitting here, and I've been sitting here a long time, I don't believe we're going to have 10 businesses come out there to be able to pay back by, anyway, taxes or anything else, the millions of dollars that we will put into it. We have got to look at some other possible venues to be out there, okay?
I agree with that. But Mark, do you know of any mixed-use sites that we can look at in the region?
They may not be in the region.
I would see what Mike could available. Yeah, I'll answer your question, I'll worry. I mean, you know, each community's got its own relationship with all kinds of stuff. But one, one, the mayor was saying, is that.
Yeah, come up here so that folks can hear, because I can't even hear.
We've had a number of proposals that have been sent to us. You know, the state sends them to us, Electric City's sending them to us. You know, we've worked with the county on some projects. But if you don't have something out there, I mean, you know, there is a small chance that that could happen.
Right.
But everybody wants infrastructure in place. They don't want to say, they don't want to commit to a site, and then it drags on and nothing happens. The state has a tremendous history for tracking industry, and we've had some major changes in this region just in the last 10 years that have put us closer to the largest, one of the largest airports in the United States. And when you're talking to businesses, having access to Charlotte-Douglas Airport is a big thing. And, you know, with 2427 being a super street type of highway, it's a very good road to get onto 485, and from there to the, to the airport is a pretty easy drive. Also, we're in the middle of Raleigh, Greensboro, Winston-Salem, Charlotte, and Fayetteville. We're in the middle of major industry, plus, we're in a beautiful area. We have, and then all the resources that we have. We have water, sewer, electric, and we have it, and we can put it in a way that makes it redundant so that it's a backup system. So electricity, like the way we've done electric in the city, by having the three delivery points, and we'll actually have two circuits serving that park. The water will be coming in from the high side, it'll go down to where we'll have a pressure valve. So if the pressure would drop in the system at all, that, it would be connected. Right now, we're looking at whether it's going to be to the county or not. But it could be connected to the county, I think, if you have a pressure valve there.
Council will have to make a decision later on, when we get that line in, how you want to connect. Do we want to run a line from the Ross Drive area up there, or do we want to connect to an existing line that the county has?
How, Mark, if I may ask, how aggressive are we right now as far as marketing this property?
Well, the, I mean, we've, when we get, we've done several things to, you know, to market it. We've been putting information in the Charlotte Business Center. A lot of people, you know, look at that. But the state of North Carolina attracts a lot of prospects, a lot of projects. And we get those requests, and we fill them out and send them in. But again, we're, aren't competitive, because we don't have, you know, the infrastructure in place. So there's plenty of, there's plenty of groups that are out there, like I said, Electric Cities, they market us, they do a very good job marketing us. The state does it, the regional partnership for the, for the Charlotte region, the county has projects that they bring to us. So we have a group of people that bring these projects to us. We just need, you know, since 2015, 2014, we've had three industries, three industries located, and the reason they located us is because we had a project, we had facilities that could locate them to. You know, if we didn't have those facilities, we wouldn't have those industries. And we retained an industry because we were able to put a deal together to help them refurbish the existing, which is a large facility. And they've gone from, you know, like 40 jobs to over 100. And we have local industries expanding too. We have one out of Montgomery that went from 50 to 150 jobs within the last six or seven months. So industries, manufacturing is, I've seen a lot of statistics on that. The people in the manufacturing industry are very positive and have a great outlook for manufacturing. And North Carolina is one of these states that attracts, consistently attracts manufacturing. I think we have plenty of opportunity to do that. That's not to say we can't look at how we want to develop the park, but I think. That's not to say we can't look at how we want to develop the park, but I think, you know, the mayor indicated that we've got to be careful how we do that, because if you do put housing into that facility, it's going to make it less likely that industry's going to want to locate in that area. And you can, we can, and when we go see Monroe Park, you can see the quality of the types of businesses that are out there. And that did take place over time. It didn't happen overnight, but they had the project, they had the product there, and it continually, regularly added and grew.
And the reason for my question, I just want to make sure that this thing isn't on the back burner, that we're aggressively, you know, going after any kind of, any kind of industry or business that we could locate down there, because I think personally, the longer it sits dormant, the, you know, the, the less likely people are to be interested in it.
Well, I think the thing that we need to do, and you know, what we're talking about tonight, is get, get the infrastructure in there. That's the thing we have to do. If we, if that's not put in there, it will sit dormant, it won't develop. And, and, you know, there's plenty of proven examples of how these parks work all over the state of North Carolina and all over the United States. But, and we, you know, we are a, a manufacturer state. We're, we're in a mega-region for the United States as a whole on the eastern seaboard. Interstate 85, well, we're not necessarily close to that. They call that, internationally, they call that the, kind of like, I can't remember the acronym, but it's like an Autobahn. Because there's a lot of German companies that are located all along that, starting up in Raleigh and all, and going down to South Carolina through Charlotte and the whole area. So there's a lot of growth from, you know, lots of different types of industries. A lot of international companies will locate, a lot of existing industries expand. I think we have a great opportunity there, and I'm, I'm willing to, you know, look at what alternatives could be considered, but I think we need to be very careful about that, you know, not to, because you don't want to, you just don't want to create a situation where you're not going to locate anybody, because, you know, some places may not want to. I forgot what the name of the place was, but they, they were naming some kind of a senior living facility. You know, I'm not sure how they would like to live next to, you know, businesses. You know, they would, it's, you know, one of the reasons I think housing would develop here is because of our beauty of our area. And, and when you, when you go see Monroe, you'll see how those buildings look nice. And those companies that are in those buildings are proud to bring their customers there and show them the types of facilities they have and, you know, you know, what a quality place it is. So there's a lot of thought goes into it, and, you know, you know, we've been looking at different things, but I just...
And we've got a prime situation with the residential, it's going to want to locate closer to the retail.
Right.
Rather than out in the middle of the, the business park. And we've got, we've got two there, one that's expanded, got another one that's in the works right now if they get their funding, and we've had a couple more look at it, but they haven't been, received the funding over the years. So I know all that area right behind there, they're, you know, been looking at residential.
But I guarantee you, once we get some infrastructure in there, ears are going to really perk up at the state knowing that we have something that's ready to move, the sites that are ready to go.
I think we know that we got to move forward with infrastructure. I guess my, my biggest concern, though, is we got three options before us.
That's the reason I suggested is that we give several alternatives. Let it all come back to council, and then they have to make decisions how to move forward.
And one thing that I'm fearful of is when I look at the contingency lines, you know, every project that we've done, we, something blindsides us. You know, we got to make sure that we...
Thank you, Dexter.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I will, he did add a little, I think a 15% contingency instead of the normal 10 on this, because, you know, there is an unknown.
A question, with regards to the layout of where the road is tentatively set, say we decide to do something different with this property, is this really the best, the only place to put a road? I don't want to put in a road and say, oh, gosh, we should have...
You can put a road, you can put a road anywhere. This is the most economical place to put it, because, and the reason being is interfering and having to do mitigation of wet streams and things.
Okay.
You have to pay for footage for every one of them you touch, and so he laid it out the best way he could with minimal mitigation and that would serve our purpose.
So regardless of perhaps how it's developed, this is the most economical way to put in a road, okay.
And you will get, if, if we go with the alternatives like I was talking about, you will get probably five different options to decide when it comes back to council. Council decides then how they want to do it.
So as Martha Su has stated with Chris not here, and I, you know, he does offer a lot of expertise with his financial background, is this something that if we wait until he returns, or are we just saying we want to ask for staff to give us all, you know, options? I mean, I guess I'm, I want a clarification, you know, I do want Chris's review and input just for his thoughts, but what do we look at in terms of tonight from us? Is it two weeks out? Is that going to be a huge factor if we wait till he returns? Or do we just say, okay, well, as your point, let's go ahead and give us, you know, all the different scenarios on the bids? I guess that's my question.
I have no problem waiting two weeks. That's, that's totally up to council.
I think so.
Your deadline is to have, to be able to spend that grant money is August the 31st.
Right.
You, you got a grant to help a part of, and it has to be spent by then, or you lose it. But I don't see that being a problem to spend if we move forward in the, in the near future.
I have great concerns over this. I, I, and I hesitate to bring it up, because if you follow my career for the 38 years that I've been here, I have been pushing, pushing, pushing everything we could do. But let me, let me remind you something. We, we had a, our budget people speak to us, and they talked to us about what we would do if we invested $5 million. They didn't tell us what we would have to do if we invested $15 million. We have that yet to be determined.
$5 million was your general fund. All the rest of this is not general.
I understand that, but, but, but you, that doesn't, that's not looking at it correctly, because in general fund, $5 million, but if you, if you borrow money from the, use money from the electric fund, you have to raise rates to raise that money. So what's the difference between raising taxes for a general fund or raising rates for, for water and sewer and all that sort of thing to fund the rest of it? We need to know where that rate is going to come from. Furthermore, we already have Pfeiffer moving in big time. Lee Allen told me today, he's now renting property to graduate students coming in here. If we spend, if we, if we strap ourselves with the $15 million, which is now, I believe, $18 million since we got the property, we're still paying for, we haven't paid for that, are we going to be able to do anything if, if something else comes up? Where we have, where we strap ourselves to do this, when we have no assurance that we're going to get anything there? And let me remind you this, we have, what did we get in the power park out at the, out at the, out at the airport?
But you know what the problem is?
What did we get? What did we get when we, when we started that huge project up on 52? We got nothing. What did we get when the people from Monroe came over and put in an industrial park in Richfield? Nothing's happened there. Stanfield has now put in an industrial park. What if nothing happens? And I commend to you, all of you, Michael Walden's book about North Carolina 2050, and he addresses very specifically rural counties like us, and what is likely not going to happen to rural counties going to 2050. So I, I have a bunch of questions there that I have raised that I think we need to address before I'm ready to vote yea on moving ahead with anything down there. Thank you, thank you.
If we phased it in, say like the infrastructure part of it, would we phase it in from like over by Henson Street or 52 South?
If you do the partial road, you're going to have to start from 52. And if you look at the, the difference, you're not going to save much money between the partial road and the total road for, I'm not saying build off all the extra roads, just the one road all the way through is going to be your most economical way to do it and not probably waste money. If you have to grade and do all the work to put in a water line, and then you let it sit so many years, then when you go back, you're going to have to do all that grading and all that again. So the, the most economical way to start it, in my opinion, would be to do the total road first. That's maybe your three options on here.
Is that number two?
Yes.
Looks like the blue goes all the way across.
Sheet number two.
Sheet number two.
Sheet number two.
That would be to go all the way through with the road to begin with. And then council remembers the water and the sewer and the electric, we intend to do as much as possible in-house. That's the reason we went to the legislature and got the special law passed to allow us to do that. And that would be as time and funding permits, you wouldn't have to go in debt for all of it at one time, because us doing it was our in-house labor. The biggest cost to us down there to begin with is the upfront money to put the road in.
And we kept thinking there might be some state money for that, but...
And we're not going to get any, because it, just like Marcus has talked about before, we're in the chicken and the egg situation where the money's only available if you have somebody in the industry commit so many jobs, and you're not going to get them to do that, because you don't have the infrastructure in place to, to bring them.
That's not saying that we might not get the money later for one of those side roads that's like the purple one here.
Exactly, exactly.
So I mean, I think we got to keep that in mind.
Right.
Well, I'm to Dexter's comment. I think it would behoove us, in light of what we heard at some of our budget sessions earlier, to investigate other potential uses for this property in terms of some type of mixed use. I think we just need to find or pursue or look to see what else we could put there besides industry, so to speak. Mixed use is, I guess, the terminology people are using. I mean, he mentioned to us what our demographics are.
Right.
And...
I'd like just for Mark to reach out to Mike Manus and say, give me some more specifics as to, maybe, I mean, maybe it's not residential, but maybe it's other mixed-use business industry, some other things that are out there. And I, and I bet there's not one in the region. I bet we'll have to go to another region to look at. But I mean, somewhere across the nation, there's got to be...
I think your idea, reaching out to him, though, because that's where...
That's what they're there for.
His information was very enlightening.
Yes.
Mayor, I move that we delay this matter to the next council meeting.
To the next meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend, second, by Councilmember Bramble. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number nine, ordinance 2002 to name a new city street as Barney Poplin Drive.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second, by Councilmember Bramble. Further discussions, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 10, consider attendance at the Stanley County Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting. I'll plan to go.
Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting, February 26th.
Yeah, that's what you do if you go.
You're going, I'll go.
Plan, plan on all of us, and we'll adjust from there. Information, Employee Service say that council approved at the last meeting. Anyone have any questions on that? If so, Dana's out there.
Sounded good.
Thank you for doing that.
Number 12, reminder to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., unity prayer breakfast will be Saturday, January 18th at 8:00 a.m. at the E.E. Waddell Community Center.
So please see me before you leave the meeting. I think everyone, except that Councilmember Hall was able to attend, so I've got the tickets. Councilmember Townsend has brought those, so please see me to get your tickets before you leave.
Number 13, reminder, the city offices will be closed on Monday, January 20th for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, and remember, our meeting will move from Monday till Tuesday, and we'll adjourn to that later. Michael moving around the table, I'm going to hold this after we come back out.
Okay. I've just got a few things this evening. One, just want to let Mayor and Council know that this past Friday, I met with the city managers of Concord and Kannapolis, just to start a discussion at their request about what would have to happen to increase their water allocation. Our current contract provides for, we'll give them up to 5 million gallons a day. They're currently using somewhere around three. The contract that formalized what we have in place now states that once they seek more than 5 million gallons a day, they will have to enter in some negotiations, and that was the reason for the starting of the conversation, that they would have to contribute to the plant expansion. So they're not in any particular rush, they're not, there's no hurry, but of course, a plant expansion isn't going to happen overnight. However, it's fairly good timing, wise on their part to think ahead before they get in some sort of crisis, but it's also very good timing, because as we've talked, as we may not remember, but a couple of years ago, excuse me, review with council, that we've actually, all of our capacity of about 16 million gallons a day is either committed or in use. So everyone who's a customer of ours has room to grow. For example, the county has 100% more capacity than what they're using now. The city has capacity to grow. Concord is up to five, and Kannapolis are allocated five, they're using three. So everyone has room to grow, but you can't double commit, you can't double commit unused capacity. So we're at that point, so there's plenty of room to grow. However, if anybody's going to be allocated anything beyond what they're allocated now, it either has to be taken from somebody's unused capacity, or we have to explain, expand the plant. So it's a good time to start that dialogue with them, because we have some need potentially in the future, and we don't know what that holds, to, if they want to expand the plant, then we think, well, how much, say they want to expand it to increase it another 5 million gallons a day, well, we decide we want that 2 million gallons a day, pass it on to that. So there's a cost sharing, economies of scale that will benefit all parties. So just want to let council know that discussion, that discussion is going on. The county has reached out to talk about updating their water and sewer agreements with the city. The water agreement has expired, but we're getting together to discuss. As I mentioned, they use about half of the capacity they have now, so I don't think there's any particular issue. I know there's some things they would like to see in agreement done differently. I think we have some things we'd like to see in agreement done differently. Don't know that it's going to be in the next couple of months, because we're also undertaking a water and sewer rate cost of service study on water and sewer. So want that finalized. What we have in place with them is very, is probably very contemporary and up to best practices and trends at the time it was implemented, but those have been in place for several decades. So there's things that could be done differently on both parts, but we need to modernize and get our rates in order and rate structure first. So that's also going on. I think, you know, Councilmember Hall had asked about 110 Park Ridge Road, which has been a frequent topic of discussion by council. Kevin sent out an email today regarding, you know, that, that really the property, like the one we discussed earlier, isn't 50%, doesn't meet the state statutory requirement for us to demolish it. So we've been trying to work with the property owner. Kevin advised today that the fire department has, has gotten to the point with the property owner that, I guess he has consented to allow us to possibly burn the property. I know there's some logistics in that particular property that we may have to take into consideration, but that it could be down or authorized at least in the next month or two, which if the, if the property owner allows us to do that, then we don't have to go through the, you know, involuntary condemnation process, which speeds up the process greatly, which is in everybody's benefit, and of course, saves a considerable amount of money. That is all I had at this time, Mayor.
Mr. Townsend?
Two things, Mayor. I know in the last few meetings ago, and I went back and searched my minutes and past agendas, I know we talked about, or got an update about that Walk of Fame from staff, but I can't seem to find it. The reason I bring that up is I know a year ago this time, is when this whole issue came up, there was a lot of requests via social media about possibly putting individuals' names on signage around town. That same conversation had once again sparked up about possibly considering putting a young man that's in the NFL name on a sign in town. You know, I don't think the general public is aware of what our intent is in regard to possibly establishing that Walk of Fame, and I hope that somewhere in the very near future that we can somehow get that, the ball rolling, whether we, I know, I know we got to establish a committee and things of that nature, so hopefully, it'll get... And last but not least, just not a complaint, but just an opportunity for improvement, I would encourage all department heads, just take a look at our city website, check your different links and stuff, and let's try to do a little bit of maintenance. I was looking at our city website today. One, for instance, I pulled up available properties in downtown, and it still got the boardroom listed for sale. And I think that sold for probably about two years ago or more. And the only other property that it got listed is the Alamo corporate center, you know, which we call the Alamo Business Center now, you know. And then I also referenced a link for the City of Alamo tax rate, and the last tax rate that was listed was 2002. So I just encourage all department heads to kindly do a little bit of maintenance at your various links and see what we can do to clean up that because we don't, we want to make sure that citizens stay informed as much as possible. Thank you.
Ms. Hughes?
Just a couple of things. I would like to recognize Lance Fallen. They had done a very nice story in the paper for recognizing him as the Alamo Police Officer of the Year. I thought it was a very nice story and what he's doing for suicide. In his training and education, I thought that was quite a nice story. And also welcome Cindy again to our group, and we look forward to working with you for many, many years. We're a fun group too, most of the time, most of the time. Good.
Mr. Aldridge?
Thank you, sir. Just to kind of add to what Mr. Ferris was talking about, the 110 Park Ridge Road, thank you for the update. You know, as we go into 2020, and I think our planning and zoning department does a great job at identifying these structures around our city, thank you to Mr. Gathers for coming up tonight and talking about this. You know, as I drive around our city, I see more and more of these houses. And unfortunately, they're huge eyesores in the community. So I want to encourage the residents, the property owners, you know, let's try to keep this, let's try to keep these properties, let's try to keep them up. Let's try to keep them, you know, if the house needs to be pushed down, let's push it down and start over. Let's figure this thing out because nobody wants those type structures in their neighborhoods. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Ms. Hall?
On the website, Ms. Dexter, I've just pulled it up, okay? An ad boy to Parks and Rec because the very first thing under Parks and Rec says the Alamo neighborhood theater. So that has already been changed on there, which, the reason I did that is it's just a great lead into, I don't know if you all saw a Facebook post, I don't know that we've gotten an email, but a Facebook post of an event they're bringing to town on February the 7th, a Motown group. And my guess is, Lisa, and I don't have my glasses on, but I can see you nod your head, my guess is, is that the folks from Monroe might have helped you get those folks. That was a great connection there. And guys, it'll seat 250?
247.
247. There is no reason in the world why that place will not be packed that night on February the 7th. So I encourage folks that are listening to this or watching it or reading about it that the Alamo neighborhood theater is open for all kinds of events, number one. Number two, Parks and Rec is trying. Some things have gone well, some things that have not gone well. This one should go well if we talk it up and really publicize it. So thank you for doing that. I'm really excited about that. Leads me into, I don't want to lose ground on this special events committee. So I'll say to my compadres up here, I don't know who's going to direct that or who's going to give us our next steps. I know that at the events during the fall and during Christmas, folks from Parks and Rec and other city employees were doing a survey, and I think at some point we'll get that survey, and that may be our next direction. But I think council needs to give that special events committee some direction about what we're responsible for and to whom do we report and those kinds of things. So, Michael, keep that on our radar screen if you don't mind, please. I hate to admit that I've forgotten, but I think there's a grand opening in downtown Alamo this week.
And I will be tied up Friday during that time. Can you possibly attend? It's a U.A.R. hearing.
Yes.
Right behind the police department. I think it's at noon.
I know where it is. I stopped by there today when I was walking, but no one was in there. So it's U.A.R. hearing.
Usually myself and then Chris Bramble and Chris Whitley are always there. I don't know if Chris is going to be tied up at the same meeting I am Friday, but Chris Whitley's out of town, so if you could at least tend and have a representative for city there because Mark will be at the same meeting I'm at.
Okay, I'll be there. And on Thursday, one of our former employees will be taking over the lead of Homes of Hope. It's my understanding that Skidaskew is retiring, and Thursday is, Thursday's his retirement date, and I'm looking back at, I believe that Shanta is going to be the new executive director. Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
But I think that Shanta will be the new executive director, and Shanta used to work for us. A shout out to utilities. Again, guys, we only hear the bad stuff, but there, utilities on a quick call came out one day last week, I think it was last week, in my community where one of my neighbors was having problems, and utilities was out there just at the drop of a hat. So we got a lot of good employees, a lot of good employees doing a lot of good work, and we always sometimes just look at the stuff that's not working. And I believe that is it for right now.
Mr. Bramble? Ms. Louder?
I can't believe there's anything that would have been left out.
Well, you can always end with me, mayor. I don't mind being the last.
I think we need to recognize what we have in the future with a new school. I think that's, that's a coming event that I think you're ready to go to work, and it sounds like a good concept.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience have anything come before council? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. We go into closed session for General Statute 143, 31811, and I think it is three for personnel. Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. We're good, Dana.